All right, good afternoon, everybody, or evening. Welcome to the Town West Rail Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, July 18th. The agenda for tonight's meeting is approving the meeting minutes from June 20th. The Bebold and Farms Special Use Permit Public Hearing, the Immortals in Matova Minor Subdivision Public Hearing, Union Hall Special Use Permit, Lenusie Minor Subdivision, Murray Minor Subdivision, both preliminary hearings, and then Planning Board Administrative Items at the end. So with that being said, I will now call the meeting to order at 7:02. First item on the agenda is approving the meeting minutes from the June 20th meeting. I will accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
Motion by Laura, second by Gloria, all in favor. I propose none, motion carried. All right, so first, on the agenda for tonight in terms of items is the Bebold and Farms Special Use Permit. So for this, we have a public hearing, and I would like to ask the applicant and the Planning Board clerk to confirm that all mail letters were provided back to the town, which I think I saw already happened before the start.
Did you check your receipts?
Yes, thank you for that. And before we open up the public hearing, I just would like to review some of the rules with the audience. These rules will apply to the next public hearing. I'm not going to read them again if you're here for the second one because there aren't quite enough. First and foremost, if you haven't already at the end of today's meeting or when you're leaving, leave before the end, please make sure that you sign in on the podium. It's two sheets, one for each respective public hearing. So whichever one you're here for, please sign in for that. There is a three-minute time limit if you wish to speak during the public hearing. There will be a warning at the two-minute mark. Any additional comments that go beyond that time can be submitted to the Planning Board in writing, and those will be reported into the official record thereafter. When speaking, please state your name and address for the record. Only speak during your turn. No side or group discussions. One turn per person to speak to the board. Address comments to the board, not to the applicant or the audience. Speak slowly, loudly, clearly. No foul language, swearing, insulting, offensive, or threatening remarks or behavior. There's no discussion between the public and the applicant for the board, and there will be no response to any questions or comments during the hearing unless unless warranted. So I will now accept a motion to open the public hearing for the Bebold and Farms Special Use Permit at 7:04 PM.
Make a motion.
Motion by Dominic.
Motion by Brad.
Second by Gloria, all in favor. I propose none, motion carried. So at this time, I will now invite the applicant just to provide an overview of your project to the group that's here, if that's appropriate, just a brief statement of scope of your these special use permits.
We stand here, do it for everyone?
Everyone, or wherever you're most comfortable standing.
Hi, everybody, hello. This is Mayor Michael, I'm Pat.
We're Bebold and Farms.
We're Bebold and Farms. We moved to Rentzerville 2016. We started the farm shortly thereafter. And right now, we are working on a farm stand, bakery, and restaurant space. It's going to be a timber crane building. We're going to be expanding our sourdough bread operation. And like Kuheart does burger nights, we're going to be doing pizza nights. We hope, we hope to be doing pizza nights.
We are, we are definitely, so we've been running the farm business since 2016. We raise sheep, goats, pigs, chickens. We sell all of their products and byproducts to farmers markets in different places in the area. And then Pat, who has a baking degree, has a mobile well, a mobile wood fire oven. Since COVID, we've been driving around and making wood-fired pizzas. And all the toppings on our pizzas, we grow and raise at the farm. It is our dream and our goal to always have a farm stand near the farm, so people could come and see the farm and see the products and see where they're from. And then what we, the reason why we have to apply for the special use permit is that we want to be able to have pizza nights there as well so that you guys can also enjoy all of the products cooked by Pat, who is, I'm a little bit biased, but is an amazing cook. And so that's what we are, our goal is, is what we are building. And then our special use permit is to allow those pizza nights to happen. So the farm stand is, is going to happen. We are going to sell our farm products and book to see if there's a lot of, so, um, talk to you about pizza nights.
Okay, and that's, that's our statement.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you. So with that being said, we will now accept any public comments from anyone here for this tonight. As a reminder, please state your name and address if you're speaking. So I'm playing a three-minute time limit. So who would like to start if you're here for this?
Okay, we're up to seventy-seven county route six. I think this is definitely a major improvement for the area. Maybe we can get some other people into the Hilltown area. Instead of just being static quo of everything's quiet and all that, like, let's get some more rotation things going on. And I have no doubt with this going on. And it's good.
You waiting for the next one here? My name's Ed Sukis, I live at 5032 Delaware Turnpike, otherwise known as the Catapa House. And we are extremely excited about having another option, not only for ourselves, but for our guests in town or nearby to get dinner or, that is, plan dinner versus lunch.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're going to start out and see how it goes.
Okay. So, yeah, excellent, excellent. Have all of our support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kerry Baldwin, I'm at 5033 Delaware Turnpike, and I also am strong in, or strong in support of the special
Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Jesse Detrow. Many may know me by my official name, Coco. I think that the idea for Bebold and Farms to have the farm stand is really wonderful. In addition to having the pizza night, I think it gives us all an opportunity, not only as my neighbor over here said, to have a place to gather, to be able to bring people in from other Hilltown areas, but it also gives us all an opportunity to invest in our neighbors' local businesses, not only through their agricultural ventures, but taking it a step further into like culinary ones. I think it's a very economically viable thing that I want to have in my community, and I want my money to go back into. And I think that this is really important if we want to maintain Rentzerville as a vibrant place to live and thrive. So I'm all in favor of it. The pizza is delicious, and I'd really love to have somewhere else to go when it's cold and I'm hungry.
I'm Letza Burton, I live at six county route 403, and I just want to feedback on what you were saying. We've been following Mayor Michael and Pat to all their pop-ups around the area, but I'd really like to keep my money and my pizza a bit closer to home.
Any other comments for the public hearing? All right, hearing none in the room. We did receive a written comment from Jen Archer and Jeff Rockton. So they just wanted to know more about the parking, hours of operation, and outdoor lighting. For this, I just want to assure the public that, you know, through this process, we've worked with Mayor Michael and Pat, the applicants, to outline what their plan is for all of these. We've additionally conducted a site visit and had emergency services come from the fire department and EMS to make sure that the location is, one, accessible and, two, there's no concerns there that we get the innovation. So at this time, this comment has been entered into the public record. And rest assured, this has all been addressed in hours of operation, parking, and outdoor lighting. But I don't know, Pat, Mayor Michael, if you want to just stand on any of those three?
Yeah, so the parking lot we're starting out with is about 10 cars. Phil Pearson's helping us out with excavation. There can be full-size parking lots. And in addition to the, in addition to the main building, we're putting up a high-tunnel greenhouse, which will be additional space if needed. And our lighting, I think I said last time to the board that number one is that when we're not in operation, we're going to be going dark.
Well, not shining out.
It should be a dark building. And then the lighting that we will have when we are in operation is all going to be down, pretty low to the ground, and shielded. And there should be one safety light near a back door, which is actually tucked behind the road.
So you can't see it from the road.
And I think that's it.
We don't want to be in one of the favors. We also live there, and I also raise animals there, and they don't want light shining in their face or loud noises late at night. So we're trying to keep it that way. Thank you all for that. I'll do one last call in case there are any last public comments in the room. All right, hearing none, just want to let everybody know that this application was referred to Albany County Planning Board for review following the environmental assessment that we conducted. And we did receive that Albany County Planning Board's review of this application, so I will refer to Andrew or Legal Counsel on what those comments were.
Sure, did you receive a copy of this referral?
No.
So I'll just read what they, they recommended. To modify local approval to include few conditions. The first being reviewed by the Albany County Department of Health for food service.
Yep.
That's pretty standard. Now, the second one, they recommended that we require professional drawings showing site location, ingress and egress, setbacks, and property lines prior to final approval. Is that something you could accomplish? Because a full survey of the property not required for special use permits, but their comments about just showing the accurate locations might be well received just to confirm we're all in compliance? Maybe something to the satisfaction of a code enforcement official?
Sure, we, we have an accurate survey of the whole property that we did when we moved in. We have drawings of the site roughly to scale as it is right now, which I believe I submitted the last time in our packet. And if an additional thing needs to be done, you tell us.
Yep, we, I mean, if I, again, also based off of checking with property line, we made sure that we're
Yeah, setbacks are
setbacks. We tend to make sure our setbacks are correct. We're not going to put anything in.
And also, the professional drawings that you guys already do have are, is the set-up drawings, which are to scale.
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think the way that this could best be addressed is if you take what you've submitted now and just show the edge of the property, showing that it well meets the
Yeah, yeah.
required setbacks. And these will be conditional for, if that's favorably, it would be a condition of approval. And you still get your approval, you just got to do these after
Sure.
to close the loop.
So taking the map we've submitted, putting the accurate setbacks on it, and gone from there. There's a, you have modifications. Yep, that's absolutely
Yeah, of course.
And you would work with the code enforcement officer to get that all
Yep, tied up.
Yeah.
So that would address all the county's comments, and it seems okay. And then before we close the public hearing, I'll just do our seeker analysis. As a reminder, we classified it as unlisted. Planning Board's lead agency, no objections were received. So I'll just read the questions for consideration. I'll assume no or small impact. But if anyone feels differently on the board, stop me and we can converse. Will the action create material conflict within adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Will the action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Will the action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the action have an impact on environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the action result in an adverse change to the existing level of traffic or affect infrastructure? Will the action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the action impact public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will the action result in an increase to the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And will the proposed action create environmental hazard or hazard to human health? So hearing none, we have no or small impact for all our indicators here, so it would be appropriate from the board to accept a motion to make a negative determination of significance. Make a motion.
Motion by Dominic, second by Gloria, all in favor.
All right.
Motion carried. Okay, at this time, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing for Bebold and Farms Special Use Permit at 7:18 PM. Motion by Brad, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Now, I'm sorry to cut you off. Before we go to that vote, I'll just read what the board is considering in requesting special use permits. So in considering enacting on special use permits, the board shall consider the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood and community. Shall also consider potential environmental impacts and the comfort and convenience of the public in general, the residents and the residents of the immediate surrounding area. The board is specifically required to consider the project's compatibility with current neighborhood characteristics, proposed vehicular access, circulation of parking to ensure there's adequate off-road parking and loading spaces, consider any landscaping or screening required, and consider the natural, natural features that exist at the property present.
Thanks, Andrew. So at this time, I will now accept a motion to approve and take action on the Bebold and Farms Special Use Permit based on the applicant's agreeing to the conditions brought forth by the Albany County Planning Board for a previously discussed. All in favor? Oh, motion by none, sorry. Second by Brad, all in favor?
All right.
Propose none, motion carried.
Thank you.
We'll follow up on the other information that was just started. All set then? So that confirms the Bebold and Farms Special Use Permit Public Hearing. Our next one is the Immortals in Matova Minor Subdivision Public Hearing. If you're not going to sign in.
Could we sign in? Could I sign in?
No.
No, I mean, no, it's not gonna happen.
We'll do a box.
Please just make sure you're signing in under the correct one, too. Thank you. You know, I watched the whole last season, and I haven't watched a single episode of the next one. I've just been so busy. But maybe that'll work out for me, because then I can binge it, yeah.
I know they're still offering like weekend passes. They were, one of my coworkers works there on weekends. So they said that there were some like weekend passes, but you have lives Saturday. You can just buy one day. I was just thinking, it's just for one day. So I thought the next one, they're going to say, right? Just one day. Yeah, it did.
All right, well, we're going to give some more comments for our next session. All right, so next we have the Immortals in Matova Minor Subdivision Public Hearing. Again, if you have not signed in for this after
Stand over here by the door.
It's our, it's nice and cool. So it appears, Brad, that we have all the mailers here. Right, you have to check these to the end, so we're all set there. So if you wouldn't mind, just provide an overview of what the scope of this subdivision is.
I'm Brad Chase, Ten Hill Road. I'm representing my neighbors, actually, who are in here up right now. But they own 116 acres, existing home. It's the old Oranbee property. There was a house on it many years ago that was tore down. Or four many years, I should say. So they wanted to split the 116 acres into two parcels, one being seventeen with the old, with the existing house, ninety-nine plus or minus. They want to build a new home smaller. They're getting older, kids are getting older, they're just on the downside. However, they love the area, they love to hunt. They allow farmers, they do their hay. So they don't want to disrupt any of that, they just want to downsize. So the bottom line is, it's, it would be just a two-parcel subdivision. And there is an existing well that they want to utilize, and they're looking forward to it.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So the same rules from the prior public hearing apply. If you are just joining us, there's three-minute time limit. Appropriate language, you know, threatening language. Please state your name and add us for the record before any comments. So at this time, I will accept a motion to open the public hearing for the Immortals in Matova Minor Subdivision at 7:37 PM. Make a motion. Motion by Laura. Second by Tommy, all in favor. All right, so at this time, we will open up the public comment portion of this. So if you are here for this public hearing, you may still leave a comment.
Hearing none, second by, we got the county back. They gave another recommendation to approve with a condition of highway work permit obtained for driveway construction. And that's a standard.
Yeah, that's fine. And I meant, there is an existing driveway. Of course, it's a little overgrown, so they'll be utilizing the exact same driveway as the old home.
So as long as
So, yeah.
We'll put that in the
Okay. That's enough, that's enough. Yep.
And before we close the public hearing, again, I'll run through the secret analysis recap. We classified it as unlisted, planning board lead agency. I'll assume no or small impact, my hearing otherwise. But I will read the same conditions for the record. Will the action create material conflict within adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Will the action result in a change in the use or intensity of use? Will the action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the action result in an adverse change to the existing level of traffic or affect infrastructure? Will the action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Will the action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will the action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And will the action create hazards to environmental resources or human health? So again, we had no or small impact for everything, so it would be appropriate for the board to accept a motion to make a negative determination of significance.
Thanks, Andrew. At this time, I'll accept a motion to make a determination of negative significance on the minor subdivision. Motion by Brad, second by Gloria, all in favor. Propose none, motion carried. So at this time, I will accept a motion to close the Immortals in Matova Minor Subdivision Public Hearing at 7:30 PM. Make a motion. Motion by Laura, second by Dominic, all in favor. Propose none. And I will now accept a motion to approve and take final action on the minor subdivision based on the applicant agreeing to the conditions brought forth by the Albany County Planning Board. Motion by Dominic, second by Brad, all in favor. I propose none. All opposed, none, motion carried. So, um, just one thing with this, you have sixty-two days from the date that we found the maps, which I can do after the meeting today. Um, just to file the Albany County Plan.
I believe it was filed online, correct?
Oh, you don't, you don't file it with the planning board, you just file it.
Sorry.
With Albany County.
Albany County.
Oh, with the county, exactly.
Yeah.
So I need another, one more map, is that what you're saying?
There should be two MyLars in there.
Yes.
If that's, so we keep one Mylar. You take one Mylar, yep. Albany County.
Yeah, so following, I, I can find them, um.
Okay.
Takes a little while.
I can stop down and grab it?
Yeah. You can leave any.
Okay.
Don't forget the sixty-two days you gotta do it all.
We're gonna, he's gonna be gone next week, and I guarantee you that they will be in all.
If you run into a problem, the board can extend it for sixty-two days, but after.
No, it's good, this is gonna happen soon. The only thing, um, I want, just wanted to jot down, so let me interrupt you. What was the one condition from the county? What was it, a highway permit?
That you got a highway work permit.
A highway work. Okay. And that will just be for the driveway purposes, basically, that exists, so it will be.
Please let the county say.
I got you. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hey, so next, you have the union hall special use permit.
Yes, that will.
So, welcome back. The last we talked at the June twentieth meeting, um, the list of things that I had that were required were, was the additional one hundred dollars for the application fee. Uh, Chris's plan, you guys can receive.
Yeah.
I think there's some more updates. Oh, oh, that's more updates, I think so, there's a typo. And then, um, we also requested petition of a secret form.
Anna, I did not receive that. I didn't receive that, so I don't have time for that.
And, um, basically you give me one hundred dollars.
I gave it to Victoria.
And that, that secret form will probably be pretty similar to others applying, is the same.
So, thank you for supplying that, we can take a look through the, um. The plan we provided, so we had asked for the business objective and scope, hours of operations legality, parking access, and, um, indoor schedule, I believe, was all accounted for when I was at earlier, but, um, we can just give. The funds for a few moments, let the board take a look at when you submitted this file.
The parking was intended on our site plan and making one, so we didn't include it in this kind of pocket?
Yeah, that's okay.
Did you confirm that, no additional parking, ten, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all good now.
Any members of the board have any questions for, for, for the, for the. Alright, so I think everything, um, looks appropriate here, and these are folks that are either tuning in online or here, um, we have the, we have the, on a prior special use permit, um, that accounts for a lot of the information that is applicable to the special use permit. Um, the planning board will be intending to conduct the site visit for the special use permit and emergency, um, services visit as well, and we can, um, evaluate some dates that work under, if it's a built one for any of the projects. Um, so that's part of.
Do we need to be, not excuse me, just one person that will, you know, confirm, um, and it'll just be similar to what we said before the last time before the scope of this.
Um, and, you know, it'll just be similar for new members of the board. Alright, so at this time, we can review the secret form of part one answers. Okay, so this is occurring at fourteen sixty-two center, room number one, five six one. The total acreage, um, of the site that is being, that is, for this project, we have nine acres. Does the proposed action, will it involve the legislative, involve the legislative adoption of the plan, local ordinance, and then the city's general regulation? No. Does the proposed action fire permit approval or funding of other gov, any governmental agencies? No. And question number five. And, um, any members of the board please stop if you have a question. Okay, is the proposed action of permanent use under zoning regulations? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Is the proposed action, does it dominate the structure of existing built or natural damage? Yes. Is the site of proposed action likely to contain, in a joint with stateless, a stateless critical environmental area? No. And please, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are there public transportation services available at one year of the site's full traction? No. Are there any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available in the site proposed action? Um, this one was not answered, but we've had an answer, and I wish it back down. I believe the correct answer is no, is that. Does the proposed action meet where it suits the energy code requirements? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing public or private water supply? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater facilities? Yes. Does the site contain structure that is restricted to how the state natural actions to places? Yes. Is the proposed action located in archaeological sensitive area? No. Okay, does, does any portion of the site or proposed action lands where they properly contain wetlands, other water bodies, or any other, so, if you can see this. No. Will the proposed action physically alter or so change any existing wetland or water bodies? No. The next question asks to identify the typical habitats that are occurring in these suburbs. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animals or associated habitats that are affecting the covenant as being threatened or endangered? No. Is the product site located in the location of the flood plain? No. Will the proposed action bring stormwater expanse either from clean or non-clean sources? No. Will the proposed action include construction or other activities that involve the containment of water or other liquids? No. Has the site of the proposed action or the adjoining property been the location of an active or closed waste management facility? No. And has the site of proposed action or adjoining property been subject to renovation for housing displays? Um, does the planning board have any questions on the proposed action for part one of the secret? Um, so if you could just come up here and please, please eight, see. Okay, so that's the, I think we can close for part two, um, the special action, and do it, only with me.
I think we should just classify it as unlisted and clear lead agency, and then go through the criteria after the site visits before the public hearing.
So I will now accept the motion that the action is classified as an unlisted action. Motion by Laura, second, second by Dominic, all in favor. I will now accept the motion that the town of Orangeville be designated as an agency. Those are by Dominic. Second by Brad. All in favor. All opposed, none, motion carried. Um, so, we will conduct site two, and we'll review part two of this, uh, after our, uh, site visit. So, at this point in time, I think our next steps would be to, to throw this over to Albany County Planning Board, who are on a county road, um, and the nature of the special use permit, um, and also schedule the public hearing. So, the earliest date that we could have the public hearing would be in August fifteenth, is that correct, Amanda?
Yes. Yes.
So, I just want to hold the word, our hosts here, August fifteenth, um, just making sure that we have.
I will.
Do you remember how this happened, actually, please?
I don't think so. Either way, we do have a quorum.
Does Albany County Planning Board need to perform?
They're the third. Their meeting always matches our second meeting of the month.
So, so they will have seen it before?
They will, and sometimes they get me the referral and sometime, or recommendation, sometimes they don't.
So, one of two things, we can do the meeting on the eighteenth, but there's no guarantee that we have the comments back from Albany County, because they moved that way. Or we could do it on. When I said the fifteenth, would you put?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Sorry, my second fifteen, I apologize. I think I have to do the fifteenth, because I said that wrong.
You did.
Um, so we can either do it August fifteenth, or we could do September fifth, we'll do the next. Um, regardless, if we don't get the comments back from Albany County on the fifteenth, we'll have to come back for the fifth to have it, that's like, the earliest that we could.
And you know that Jesse will be here for that, and I'm not sure that he's here on, there to get in the, on that one, so it isn't, it's a question for, for this one.
The nineteenth.
September nineteenth?
Mm-hmm.
I will, for Amanda, please, I like him.
Probably the sooner the better.
Yeah.
I think what would make sense for us to do is, sketch, assuming we're not doing the next August one, schedule it for the fifth, and to find out that's not going to work, or it's straight up.
Okay. So we need.
We could even address it at our next meeting without you present, just saying we're, we scheduled.
So, I will accept the motion from, um, to schedule the union hall special use permit public hearing for September fifth. Motion by Laura. Second by Brad, all in favor.
Sorry, so we're not ending for August fifteenth?
As you said, you said the earliest, we're on the fifteenth, but it's contingent, so we went to fifth. But we, September. We can't really approve it without seeing the. Let me stop.
Hold on, I agree, but the earliest, I have the same impression.
I got your view, sorry.
Okay, same.
Oh, I'm fine, you.
I mean, if, if the term ends up working out, can you play it for us, but, um, maybe just might be a little bit.
I would prefer that we have to. Because we can't go down that route, and then you gotta want to come back, I would assume.
Okay. Okay. Alright. So.
Whatever note you want.
So let's, maybe go back to what we said, we'll schedule it for the fifth and for the fourth.
So. Um, so at this time, we'll send you the list of the others, it's the same process as previously, uh, we need certified malleys when we have to consent, I think, two weeks prior. Uh, before, and then we will take care of posting it in the paper, and, uh, with the vibe of just the, you know, the, that makes sense.
Then one question that just came up, because we did the historic aspect on this before, is it outside changing at all with this, or it's a, just an interior? Okay, so maybe if we revisit that historical preservation, or certificate of approbation, we did, just wanted to confirm that.
So you have our emails, right?
No.
It's, um, you know, with what name it works.
Sure.
I'll tell me in a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, we have the images. Alright, I think that's everything for today for you guys, so thank you, um, thank you for all the documentation. Okay, so, next we have the Louisiana minor subdivision.
Three extra copies.
Um, while we're getting these out.
Can you refresh your guide memory? So, this is a sixty, approximately sixty acre lot, uh, on Pucker Street, I believe, uh, next to Potter Hollow Road, Potter Hollow Mountain Road. Uh, the gentleman owns the parcel, and he is trying to split it, uh, evenly in half to, uh, accommodate the two houses that were built on the parcel. So there's two separate houses, separate wells, and separate septic systems, uh, and he would like to just separate the lot in half to give one half to one house and one half to the other. It is partially split by Pucker Road, um, each part of the lot exists in different zoning districts. The side south of Pucker Street is in, uh, I believe, Resorts Conservation Two. And then the north part of the lot, which is the larger part here, is agricultural, and there are a couple other agricultural lots around it, I have an agricultural data statement. I believe it is, uh, where is it? I think it's Criswell, and lands up, where, up here, so not directly abutting the houses on the other side of the road. Um, I know there are a couple unnamed streams that kind of go through the lot, it's pretty much just grassland and woodland, it's, it's nothing crazy, the other side of the property is more well. The other side of the property is more well-developed with the two homes. Uh, I had presented this project probably two years ago. I know there was a major contention with one of the houses not having a COO, a certificate of occupancy. Um, we worked with Mr. Lippert, uh, my structural engineering team, they conducted a structural inspection of the house, according to the code, I believe it was nineteen eighty. Um, we prepared an engineering report, the client is currently working on or has completed all of the requirements on that engineering report. Um, there's little things like making sure drywall was put up over some exposed insulation, some handrails need to be adjusted. One of them was an electrical inspection, because it had not been inspected since, I believe, Mr. Lenuzi purchased the house, and he just sent me, uh, a picture of the inspection on Monday, that it, it passed, according to code of nineteen eighty, so. Um, now that the, uh, issues with the house and the certificate of occupancy have been, um, or are in progress of being finished, we would like to kind of move forward with the, with the subdivision.
So there's two houses there now, on one lot?
Two houses, yep, one one lot, which we're trying to rectify.
So that's the whole purpose of what we're doing?
Right, yep. I believe it was owned by Mr. Lenuzi's mother, who has now passed away, and he is splitting between him and I believe his sister. They're just splitting the land to, to keep each of the houses and, and keep the land on the other side of the, of the road.
Right, um, you know, this, when you do the documentation, that they want to ensure the picture.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that something that you keep the line to the board?
Uh, just information on the easement?
Yes.
So, right now, um, Parker Street is an existing state and county route, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, it's been a while. But there is a gravel drive that kind of leads up to both houses, I think it's partially gravel and partially paved. Um, it's the current access of both houses right now, so my client would like to continue. And I, I remember it was another issue that the board brought up about maybe putting in a new driveway. Um, I, I spoke to the client, he's kind of adamant about not doing that, so we would strongly, we would like to go through the easement, um, if that's a possibility.
I would prefer not to, we just download and sold name or issues and stuff like that. If we're going to do all of this now, I'd rather see it done now.
And we have the road from the...
You've got the road from the, not the acreage and all of that, just to eliminate it now, I think would be...
Okay, I, I can bring that up with him again, I, I remember him being pretty adamant about not wanting to do that. Um, like, he's already gone through the process of getting the certificate, um, his house, which wasn't cheap, so. Um, I'll, I'll talk to him, I'll, I'll just ask him if, if it's a possibility. Would that be, um, something that would have to be taken care of before the subdivision would be approved?
We would need to do the mapping.
Okay.
And this is graph mapping, graph...
Yeah, this is just a perimeter.
Yeah, so maybe we'll need to identify on the...
Okay, so we... Okay, i- is there any, like, specifics of the design, can it just be a gravel drive going through that graphs, that graphs field to the house?
Okay, driveway.
It comes down to the town, park through the town road.
Yeah, town road.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure whether, you need a culprit, that's all, you might need a driveway access permit as a culprit. I don't know if there's a low spot, I don't know, it's definitely a title.
From, the, from the, from the topo, it's kind of hard to tell, because I haven't actually been on the site, um, these are twenty foot contours, so it's difficult to tell. But from the photos that I've seen, it's pretty flat, so I don't think it's crazy.
Yeah, it's pretty flat. Um, so can, can you personally look at all of the mapping?
Sure, I can do, well, the highway, the highway supervisor will issue that permit. Um, but I think you guys, if you go on digital GIS, you'll be able to tell whether you need a culprit.
Yeah.
I don't think, you, you were looking there, Chris, you didn't pick the, just now.
Right, and, and I can always talk to our civil engineers and see what they think about the whole situation.
And ultimately, if your client says, no way, not doing that, you can continue with the application with that easement proposed. Obviously, you're kind of more feel about it, so that would be taken into consideration.
So would that be something that, if we were to go that route, would that be something that would deal with subdivision? If, if...
Potentially?
Even if we don't want to, but we definitely have, um, strong views on this board, but we would prefer it. And I think that's a stance that should be addressed.
Probably, yeah.
Especially on that piece of property driveways that you're not able to afford.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak to him again and just see if he changes mind about it, and I'll let him know that the board prefers a second driving. Mm-hmm.
Um, so, in looking at your application, I just have a question on the lot numbers. Um, is the total acreage to be subdivided is not applicable to the two lot numbers, presently depending what the exact lot?
Um, it, it has, because it's, it's on the map, I don't know if that application is, is the old copy, I thought I put the new copies in there. But the total acreage currently is fifty-seven point nine seven acres, and we are proposing to split the lots in half evenly to twenty-nine point zero one acres.
Okay, that's total.
But I, I can update that on the application if that's, if that's required. I think I, I added a, a sketch plan application and then a minor subdivision application. And I think the minor subdivision application is, is the updated.
It's, I think...
It's variable.
Yes.
Plus when you multiply it by two.
Yeah.
Okay. It, there might, I, I think I remember running the closures now that you mentioned it, and there was a remainder that just ended up being tossed off. Because it's difficult to mathematically split these lots, because they're kind of funky looking, so that, that might be why.
I think maybe just to make sure that on the open, it's moving here, I think so.
Normally, we just add a plus or minus, would, would that be fine?
That would be fine.
That's what's on our map. Yeah, just plus or minus.
So, um... I think at this point in time, in order to move forward, uh, we need to review the mapping, the final mapping, to see what it looks like.
With the driveway? Okay.
So I think at this point in time, um, your actions, I'd go with, sleep with your applicant and see what, what can be done.
Now, just a, a secondary question, we, my company, the civil department, uh, proposes a lot of subdivisions with proposed driveways. Would that be something that I could put on a map as a proposed design of the driveway and get it approved that way? With the understanding that the driveway is to be built once the subdivision is approved?
It would be a, if we were going down that way, you would be locked into that proposal, and it would be a condition of approval.
Okay.
So it would be, and that would still be in the board's discretion.
Yeah. Okay. I, I don't generally deal with proposed stuff, because I, I just deal with survey stuff, so I would just ask.
Yeah.
I would prefer a driveway before, so I'll send you on that, just, just my thing. It's a bit different than showing the proposed house location.
Because the house is already existing.
Well, yeah, I guess in this case.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then after that, we can go through more, we found these forms and everything that's here.
Okay.
Um...
Do you have any other questions about the mapping, or would you rather kind of review it first?
I did review it earlier, and those were my questions.
Oh, okay, okay.
I didn't see if you did the copy, but I do appreciate that.
Sure, yeah.
I'll ask if the board has any other questions, um, you'll notice that it is separated by, it's on two sides of two different roads, right?
It's on both sides of one, yeah, yeah. The boundary, uh, is off of the road, so it's separated kind of here.
So it sounds like getting it up is final, is you, whatever your final project is, you find with all our requirements. Whatever's on there, how far apart the dots are.
Okay.
That would go from there.
Alright, sweet. And then, um, I know we were talking over email about the application, so would you bring that?
I did, I brought a check, I, I can just take it back if, if we're going to wait on that.
Either or, we can file it with them, um, we can put it in the file at this time, and see if that comes.
That's fine, because I, I know that the price has changed since last year. But that's fine, that's fine.
Fine, as I think you're leaving.
Um, see, I, I think I'm going to get in trouble if I leave it, the, the financial part, so I, I'd rather just take it with me and I'll bring it back, fresh check, whenever we go forward with that.
Um, do you have any, remember the board instructions you wrote in?
So we, we showed the two houses, the septic, but do they have to show the well or something?
Uh, the well is on there.
And it is, I'm seeing.
It's okay, uh, it's kind of hard to see, the well is there, and then we have the hundred foot, so. It's kind of a, a busy map, especially at the scale, it's a pretty big piece.
Well, we appreciate the coming in, do you have any questions to ask?
Uh, I think I got most of them answered, I just kind of wanted to get it in front of you guys, so, and move it forward. Yeah, it has, yeah, we, we, we're trying to get through that COO issue, and then client finally came back. Because he lives in New York City, so he's not always on. Um, but just to the, um, engineer's report, I don't know if you want to discuss that now or later, but most of the stuff, I believe, has been completed. Um, I know he has a contractor coming out to finish the remainder of the work, which I believe has to do with, like, the handrails, the basement and the risers. I think it's like, he said about thirty days is what he was expecting to get that finished, so I'm like, be ready by the time I come back to the client board, and refer it to me. I, I spoke with him and he said he wanted to do a final inspection after that was all said and done, so.
So, I think to me, so that our, that seems to be the new wall that goes on in parallel, correct? So I, I think we are all set, um, in terms of the engineering report and everything, so.
Okay.
Yeah, when you are ready to come back, um, just let us know on Friday prior, and see if any bad news that can happen at that time.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, do you have that envelope for the check?
Thank you. Do you want to fix the document? No, please. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, me too.
Need to be broken. Let's see, I did this. Don't text me or reply to anything.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the preliminary meeting for the Murray, five or something. Our name is Murray.
You're up. Oh, I'm so worried. Just want to see how you can, for the board to...
Yeah, I'm providing, um, overview of what your proposed project is.
Yeah, I have, uh, forty-five point six acres and a five acre lake. I want to separate part of, part of the property, which I need fifteen acres on the lake. I want to separate across the road, which would be about eleven acres if I took twelve or fifteen, it doesn't matter, you can tell me what I got to do. To make sure I have enough property on the lake and sell the rest. I bought it as a confinement property when I retired from the service department, and now, you know, we want to do a little traveling, and, uh, my wife and I are looking to separate a piece of property, and that's it. Uh, I have a...
I, I don't think the planning board has that much, like you have right there, there's a little bunch of other stuff.
A little teeny, when I make some coffee, then it's...
Certainly. And then, hello.
You don't have a mass, do you?
No, no.
I got about four acres on the lake, and then I got forty-five across the road. And I just want to pick a piece of property across the road that I can keep, to make the fifteen acres. And then whatever's left over, if somebody wants it, they can have it. That's basically it.
And what did you say the total was, forty?
Uh, here, forty-five. Forty-five point six is original, and, uh, if I took the four acres or five acres that are across the, where I am on the lake, then I would need an extra eleven to twelve acres across the road.
So just, I'll just drop that real quick. You're going to need a survey of it?
Yep, yep.
So...
I have, I have the original survey.
Yeah.
But I got to get it resurveyed.
Yeah, go to the same people who did it, their company.
Yeah, with Jim Snyder, I know him quite well. And if, if, if you look at what I'm looking at here, I own this part here, well, actually, I own all this, but this is the lake side. And where it's highlighted, that's where I want to cut off. Can you see the dark part?
Oh, this is the lake?
I'm sorry. This is the lake side.
Oh, this is the lake?
Yeah, this is the whole lake, too.
This is my test?
Wait, this is the lake right here?
I'm sorry. The lake is right there. This is, this is where my house is. This is across the road, and alls I want to do is cut this piece of property back to the, the four acres.
Is that going to run into any zoning issues?
I know variance down to my notes, as I was...
What is, what is, I don't know, there's a variance. Uh...
RC, RC three.
RC three?
He's bringing the lot into compliance, and he's got plenty of acres left on the northern parcel.
But I don't see how, looking real quick, I don't know that would be a...
There are two bit of variance between.
Yeah, that's what you were saying.
It's not crystal white, please.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You have crystal white on the internal, it's RC three, duck.
Yes, fifteen acres.
Yeah, if you're going for a set, then you could end up with some of the other ones that are single.
Yeah, what I was left over, forty-two, yeah. I mean, if it, if it comes to where I have to have more.
Oh, you have two acres, two acres and fifteen acres.
Have it resurveyed, not resurveyed, but certain acres I need.
Doesn't sound like it.
No, you should have, you should have, in the end, two lots and one fifteen.
Yeah. The forty, whatever, I might say.
Yeah, it's a... He really...
And it's got, yeah, it's got to be forty-six. Yeah, yeah, it's forty-five.
So, yeah, I think the next steps here would be, obtain a survey map, um, would you see, you know, the exact, uh, this application, I think that runs, that processes now, to like, you know, whatever. Um, and that, for the survey map, um, in, do you have a copy of your application to come out?
Uh, we can make it, see, really good.
They all have the copies of everything you have in your email.
Okay, I got it in my email, scanned.
So, um, on here is the listing of all the components that we keep in the mapping, so share this with your surveyor.
Okay.
And have them, um, fill it out. Um, let me just go through and see what else for me. We have the C for, so, um, and then the P associated. Oh, no, you're...
That was just thrown.
Um, so just updated mapping, we have your application, that app... That application will need to be updated for whatever the exact acreage is, once you know that. You know, the two lots.
Yes, okay.
But we can address that once you know that exact stuff. So Amanda's gonna make copies for you, so you'll have the listing of what needs to happen on the survey maps. There is a two hundred and fifty dollar application fee for the minor subdivision. Our form said one hundred and fifty dollars.
That's why I got a hundred and fifty on there.
Um, sorry. And we don't need that right now, so when we come back, we can bring that with you. We adopted new fees for twenty twenty-four, for calendar year twenty twenty-four. And we just had it caught up with our forms we've updated that, so apologies for that.
And those requirements on the lots are for both lots. So it's gonna say house, well, so lots keep gonna be vacant, you have to hypothetically lay it out.
Oh, there's something...
Because you can't just have vacant land, it's gonna be hypothetical, as if there was a house proposed. There's one existing on the second one, makes you put all the same requirements on both parts of it. No, if you tell Sarah, no, she's gonna do all your, you know, lot line and...
Whoever buys it, they can...
Um, so those will be our next steps. To get on the agenda for future meetings, you just have to reach out to the planning board for and or Vicki on Friday prior, on the Friday prior to the meeting.
Okay.
And submit your documentation at that time. Because we like to do advanced review of it, so that before we get here, we can at least know, you know, if there's any questions that you might have for me to make sure we reduce the number of meetings that we come here. Maybe, you know, more. So do you have any questions for us?
No, I, Jim and I have been going back and forth crazy. Most of the stuff that you're saying, I'm aware of. And other than just the little things that you were saying about the well, other than just getting my survey done, I've been dealing with Jim Snyder probably the last two weeks or so. I see Jim quite a bit.
Okay, perfect. I mean, do you have any questions as you're preparing this, before we go out to Austin and pre-prepare the body of this? So, you know, we look forward to seeing you back.
Actually, I'm not looking forward to coming back. I wanted this to be over.
Once, you know.
You guys are very helpful, thank you.
It'll be easy once you get out of the conversation, so.
So it was better, she thought.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
So last, I know it's on the agenda, we have administrative items. So this is for us. So we have the, just to provide a background, Lobella Associates are assisting Rensselaer Water District with the development of a drinking water source production program plan. This out is, there was a date on the technical support award from the U C B C and D O H. And Lobella Associates has a contract to help develop these drinking water plans. And they're going to be working with Rensselaer also, they're working with Project Blue to use across the state. They were assigned recently. So they have a stakeholder group that is being assembled. And they would like representative from the planning board to attend those meetings. Those meetings occur monthly on Tuesdays at one P M. And they think they'll last for approximately eighty months. And they'll be virtual over Microsoft Zoom. Unfortunately, I can't commit to attending these meetings just because they're very live today. At one P M, so I, on Tuesdays aren't I busy as day two, I have a family meeting to be done. So I want to know if anybody here wants to have availability or interest to be the planning board member. That's, you know, represented for.
It was in the afternoon. Wanted to do it, but...
She doesn't deserve.
It's technical.
It's on in person?
No, it's, it's noon or two. I can ask Carol.
Can you accept the comment from the public? Okay, so I'm on the water here. I participate in this program as well. Even if you commit, it won't hurt the project if you can't make every meeting. And in fact, you could alternate if that could help. It's not so much a requirement as, this is a new program for the state. And we're just trying to gather as many stakeholders, as many people that are involved. You know, certainly the water district is involved, so we're always convinced we have somebody at these meetings. And yeah, they're meant to be convenient, so we love not in person. If that means you're already driving somewhere and doing, it's a lot easier, you know, to do longer. I, for example, can't make this coming meeting, which would be the end of, I think, thirtieth.
Have they started the meetings yet?
Yeah, we had our first meeting last month. And so the idea is to get good representation from the town, you know, that's what I call the stakeholders. So that, you know, we want to have it consistent. So the idea is to protect the land around Lake Myasaurus. Now, that's a pretty easy get, because it's in a forest preserve, right?
Forests are protected.
Right, but not officially by the state in this program. Now, why or what's the value in this for anybody? I can't say there's a direct, there's direct leverage involved, but we believe, because you may or may not be aware that we're, we just started a project to upgrade an eighty-year-old water system, municipal water system that services eighty connections in the area of the Hamlet. Participating in a program like this tends to look good for the water district and its chances of perhaps gaining access to grant money in order to help pay for an upgrade. It could take years from now, so. So I, my only point here is to encourage someone from the planning board to see if you can even make a commit. You know, provide your email, join once. And I'm not saying you don't have to come anymore after that, I'm just saying it, this way you're on a list. You're gaining access to material that's being distributed. You're aware of what's going on. And, you know, if whoever volunteers to make it, if it is a single person that volunteers, you know, we can always do our best to keep you up to date with what happened with the last meeting.
Exactly.
Because in the end, if you want some more, for excellence, eight, eight, or seven at this point, right? So.
Yeah, I didn't, he had the to let's do, but...
So, yeah, we totally care over how it's not.
So in the end, will the other towns that did have the property around their water source private our own wide town to preserve it? Is essentially what you're doing?
Well, not, I don't know if I'd use the word preserve, it's for protected, you know. So, you know, it might have been a chemical plant somewhere nearby. Maybe a farm that used pesticides or something, you know, that sort of thing, so.
Is this stakeholder called just Rensselaer, or is it other potential?
This call is just for, right, right. There are many other municipalities that are working to do the same thing.
And those calls are just up there, which are then the findings where we're at.
There's some Q and A that goes on, it's discussion mostly, you know, they're asking questions about how, who, when, and why. And so, you know.
So we're there just to listen.
Stakeholders like you on the planning board, if you don't have the answers to questions, could be the people somehow to provide those questions. So if you come back to the board or planner and actually, you know, get that information and maybe bring it back. Even if it's just the meeting now, you can help the project continue to move forward.
Were there any written reports on the meetings?
Are they open to the public, like, is there public information asked or, like, is it provided to the public? What happens to these meetings or if we can read it if we weren't in attendance potentially?
I would like to say yes, but I haven't seen, I mean, we, like you said, there's only been one meeting so far, it's...
Where are the meetings, Steve? All the meetings are online?
Yeah.
You tell me what it is.
I, I'm trying to get it, like, there's two papers. So they're not in person, they're meant to be convenient, so.
Obviously, obviously. No, if I could request, we could say materials.
Yeah, just, if she doesn't see it.
Is that something that we could do? We can propose our three, our delegates at all the time and we request them to do it?
I think that's a great start and that's as much as, you know.
But maybe it's tough for just all of us, because...
It's pretty time, sure. I mean, it's tough for me too, I worked during the day as well.
It was noon, I'd made swing it, but one P M, you know.
And there's no one saying that there isn't flexibility.
Yeah.
Maybe you could move to noon, we've, no one's asked.
Well, I say that, but every other meeting I have a meeting, so. Every other, you say I have a meeting, so.
No, there's seven meetings, you need to make two. And if we could provide it, it'd be nice transparency for us to read it as well, just as board members and possibly Q and A for the next.
Okay. I, I will, I'll take that away and go to those folks and say, there's willingness to participate. Here are some things we like, flexibility, alternates, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I can be helpful, Tracy, with who we decide and who's the, you know, the group that will be on the meeting.
Right, right. Great, thank you.
Anything for coming, do you have anything else for us?
No, well, there was a couple of things going on, and frankly, I didn't even know that was supporting your agenda, so I'm really glad to hear that.
Great, so the fact that you said my next item is the August first meeting, our next one coming up. I'm unable to attend that meeting at any point in time in obligation, so. Now, I don't know if people have any agenda items to have it, but we need to plan for the fact that we will. Seeing as all of our folks tonight that are pending are, you know, scheduled out for a little while or they have items that are going to hold a little bit more time. So we have someone that belongs to this. So I will write it out.
If you write it out, well.
Oh, you're good.
Tell me if she likes it.
And if we don't have items by that Friday, we can... I'll be here.
Yeah.
And I guess just as a poll, will the board be, will the rest of the board be around?
I'll be here.
I'll be here. Okay, so. Um, alright, so we'll plan for that and I'll actually, based on, and we'll see. And we just need to determine a meeting hall status with me. Well, considering our, how would folks feel about doing it on, in a similar way that we did last site visit on August fifteenth prior to one P M? Oh, you're talking, but you can't be going for the, uh, the last one, yeah?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah.
Or we could do the fifth too, September fifteenth, but there may be a chance that the applicants are not available. You can not, you can live without them. And I'll ask Carol.
Well, if they are, we can ask them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was gonna run a five. Yeah, I wanted to run a five, obviously, but just launch before school. But would that work for folks before the meeting? That way we're doing everything on, you know, the same day and, and I'm going on the issue just one day. Alright, so I'll propose the fifth week, we'll see which work better.
And then if you're planning on the date, I'll, I don't know if you need to...
I actually, I don't think we need, after I spoke it, we've already done the last stuff. So I can work with that. Okay, so that concludes the formal agenda, because I think we've all stuck in the power.
Oh, Jen, what do you, go ahead.
You guys all good?
Yeah.
Lot line revision versus annexation versus one edge subdivision. Applicant Bates Holtz has the up and only application coming in for cutoff of fees. And her question was whether or not the language of this subdivision, or this property would prohibit or activate a time clock for a future cut on that parcel. So I know that there's a timeline that we have between minors and majors, but are lot line revisions exempted from that timeline? Or do we, is our minor?
Lot line, lot line adjustment, annexation, whatever it would be, because it's not creating anything new. We're just moving existing line. It sounds like they might be creating a new lot.
No, no.
Oh, so they're just moving it.
So I have to reword their application to their, we're using annexation or? What's our turn?
What happened was Jake built his shed on his sister's property. Now, he's not in such good health. He wants to sell it to the niece and the aunt is wanting...
They want to get the shed.
The aunt, yeah, they want the shed and the aunt's willing to move the line. So they can have the shed.
It's a slipper.
That's an annexation.
From one lot to the other.
Yeah, a lot line.
Yeah. Lot line adjustment, annexation, whatever.
So that is not in minor subdivision?
Yeah, they're not selling, nobody's selling it, they need Jake.
As long as they make another lot, right?
No.
As long as they're not making anything new. They're not creating, so in the end, there's still two parcels, it just won't be a little bigger when they're dead.
Okay, so with that being said, I've got some email issues. This town has some email major issues. And man, it's frustrating. We prepare stuff, we're trying to use this new protocol. Mr. Murray's application was done a month ago, I had forgotten that. We did it so long ago. And I scanned it to everybody, to Anne and Amanda and Kathy White and Joe, the same night while we were here. And none of you got it, the only person that got it was a non-Rensselaer person got that email, which was the applicant. Thank God, he forwarded it back to me tonight, so I apologize for not having that material in front of you tonight. But we didn't know until the last minute that none of you had. And then Saturday, I had an applicant come in, Bates Holtz came in, and we filled out every form that we had for this minor subdivision. And maybe he didn't get it on the agenda because Saturday was too late from the window, the Friday window, I don't know.
I didn't receive anything on that.
It went to you and Amanda and Kathy White. Again, so my email is infected somehow or being blocked?
Yeah, my last.
A month ago, we had a problem with email and I T was on it for three days.
And in fact, my last email, we were actually, your email, you was your test email. And then otherwise, your email to Vincent.
I mean, I've been trying to test just to see, and it's good if somebody sent you a test, if you send back and said, yes, received.
Yeah, I received your email to Vincent from Cattersfield yesterday.
Something's up, something's not right.
We can tell that the now email, email, um, a lot of water, which is required, because we just had an outage some, oh my God.
We have an I T department here, but...
We do.
We do, and we spend a lot of time on the phone with them, things and stuff.
We do.
It's not convenient. It's in the past.
It's called I T S.
But anyway.
No worries, I guess.
Unless you...
Yeah, if you...
I've said, but just saying, you can get it.
Does Kathy, does Kathy mail me email issues too?
All the time. Kathy and Amanda have, you know, every two weeks, things are going good, and then it's like, hey, I haven't heard a thing.
It'll, it'll just like kick me out, but like, it won't tell me that it kicked me out, like what happened today. I'm sending out emails and I have no idea that they're not being delivered.
Anyway, I appreciate it.
Yeah, all right, you guys, nothing that I can support, but.
I'll call IT and tell them.
If you're having issues, you can go into Outlook web, if you're having issues like with your Outlook application. And then, like, go on, like, Google Chrome or Internet Explorer, which, which everyone we use. And you can email that way, sign in, um, that's what I do.
That did work for me tonight.
I guess that's one backend way to get me through the email. And usually that works before it's better, just because it's on.
Yeah, but shouldn't it be fixed? I mean, why should we do that?
Since I've been on the board, we've had issues with emails and, and, it's not the new one for us, right? It's just, at some point, it's not insured.
Seems like it should be fixed. Right.
Well, like, that, a boil water advisory is really slightly poor.
But yes.
I, I, it was a couple hours later, I went back to the big boy, is this thing there, what is that?
I just called, I just called, I, I'd like to know what we do for a little bit too. That's my thing. Yep, it's the thing that I get in my head. It's August two, it's a bit, it's always more.
That's not Jason.
Thank you, Jen.
You have no problem.
Okay.
Okay, um, of that note, I think I'll leave some motion to the jury meeting.
I make a motion to the judge, that's my idea. Second, second by Laura, and Brad, all the things that I've got for the motion up.
I wanted to, uh, want to, I thought you made a...